It doesn't have a cap, he put it down. Is he waiting for Paul? We're ready. We're ready.
Good evening and welcome to the City of Isani City Council Committee of a Whole Meeting for Tuesday, January nineteenth. Seating may be limited. If you would like to send in a comment for public comment or public hearing to be read on your behalf, please submit that to the City Clerk at jstrand@cityofisani.us or call her at 763-762-5759. I would like to call this meeting to order if we could all rise for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Say, Mayor, I want to add something that I just got a message today. They're not really a resident of Isani, but they're a longtime resident of the area. He works down in Minneapolis and he's been mugged for the second time in the last three weeks. He was mugged this morning and he was shot in the chest and the stomach. So let's send more police officers to the State Capitol.
Fair enough. Doing roll call, all council members are present. I'm assuming Councilman Burgley will be fashioned with a lat as always. Any public comment at this time? No public comment. Let's move on to committee meeting items. E1, policy discussion.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. For discussion tonight, we'd like to, I did send you all an email. This is a couple of things. One thing I'd first like to start with is getting the council consensus on take-home vehicles and which positions they are permitted to be, which positions within the city of employees are permitted to take those vehicles home and then parameters around such policy. I do, and would like to introduce, we do have Mr. Tim Sullivan to my right. He is one of our city attorneys. He works with our personnel issues as well as any of our union negotiations. So he's just available this evening for expertise in this kind of matter.
What's the policy state now for take-home vehicles? Anybody allowed to take them home besides the chief?
Well, there's two different things that are, we've found out that Lexipol says one thing which the council has approved and then the city policy says another. So we're kind of conflicted.
The second area after we talk about take-home vehicles is actually about the Lexipol policies. We did not have those policies all go to council. So that's why you are not probably aware of what those policies say because they're not public information unless they, we bring them to council or the chief brings them to council. Within our personnel policy, it does state that department policies are permitted with the city administrator to review. I'd like to also know if that's still the direction of council or if we want all of their Lexipol policies to come before council so you know what they do state.
Before we make any decision, I'm going to weigh in on saying this, that every city around us, I've called and they have their top two personnel within their police department have take-home vehicles. You name it, I've called it. Whether it's Bram or the Sheriff's Department or Cambridge or North Branch or Anoka County Sheriff's Department, I've called them all. Let's make note, Councilman Burgley has now entered the room. Every, every city, every sheriff's department, county, their top two personnel within their police department has take-home vehicles and it's, it's an operation. Chief, you can ring in. Is the chief even here? Oh, I didn't even see him. Chief, interrupt me at any time here if, if I say something wrong. It's an operation tactical thing for not only our residents but our city. I personally don't see an issue with it, but that's my opinion. I guess what Ms. Wood needs to know is, and the last thing that I will say is, the way I feel is cities, one entity, police is another and fire is another. They should, in my opinion, they should all have their own policies because they are different entities. But that's my opinion. Other than that, I guess what we, Ms. Wood needs to know is, do we want her and the chief to sit down and go over those Lexipol policies or do we want to say? What do we want to say? I guess this is open for discussion, so.
Go over which ones are conflicting each other.
Right. There are currently somewhat, some policies within Lexipol that conflict with our personnel policy and then other policies such as the vehicle use one that we need to have discussed as the direction. Per my email, I've never been or never received direction from council to authorize anyone other than the chief of police to have a vehicle if we would like to do so. That's what this meeting is for is what do we want those parameters to be? Whether it's just the lieutenant besides the chief, if there's other personnel. I know that there's a number of other cities that also permit their public works department, top people to do that. I know that the cities I looked into have a mileage requirement and that's to keep costs down and wear and tear on the vehicle and fuel cost, things to consider. One thing I would like to mention though, even though if we have policies that are departmental specific such as public works, liquor store, police, which those are all things that we have, all those employees still do need to follow our personnel policy as being an employee of the city. So there is good reason to not have those conflict. They can be perhaps different because maybe the law enforcement officers have more stricter requirements of certain policies that they may have, but it can't directly, should not directly conflict our personnel policy.
So I'd like to chime in here, Tim Sullivan. Mr. Mayor, I understand your position about, you know, the fire department, the police department, the other departments within the city. Ultimately, they all under the, are under the umbrella of the city of Isanti. So all of the employees of the various departments are city employees. It makes sense that those departments would have very unique requirements for the type of work that they do. You know, the fire department's going to have standard operating procedures that talk about their turnout gear and, you know, how to maintain their equipment and fighting fires that clearly would make sense to have a fire department policy. The police department, it's the same thing and Lexipol has a lot of very police-specific, law enforcement-specific policies in there that pertain to use of force, that pertain to the code of ethics, things like that that are very law enforcement specific. But as city employees, you know, there's a lot of the way that payroll works or the way that, you know, in the absence of a collective bargaining agreement, how vacation and sick or insurance work that apply to all city employees regardless whether they're in this department or that department. So, I mean, while it is common for departments to have, you know, rules that are specific to their department, there are policies that do apply to all city employees as well. So when, in reviewing the Lexipol policies, I would tell you that the vast majority of them only apply to law enforcement employees and, you know, chief would have the expertise on those, you know, ins and outs, the specifics of those policies. What we want to make sure is we want to make sure that if there are any conflicts between the department-specific policies and the general personnel policies, that we have an understanding what direction the council wants to go with that and see if we can try to unify those policies the best that we can. And I think that that's where the personnel policies language about department policies comes in place where, you know, the policy manual acknowledges that individual departments may desire or be benefited from having specific work rules for those departments. And the way that the policy manual provides that those policies would be handled is that they would be reviewed with the city administrator and the department head. And I, I mean, I think that the idea behind that is that the department head is the subject matter expertise for those department-level policies and that the city administrator is, you know, the representative of the city council administration that is able to have those meetings without having to call a meeting, without having to do a public notice and have an open meeting to talk about it. So I think that there's a lot of benefit that can come from having those communications and then if there is a, an area where the administrator and the chief are in a disagreement or they want to get the ultimate decision to be made by the city council, then, then that decision could be brought to the council. I think that one of the examples regarding take-home vehicles that was brought to my attention involved public works and the possibility of making sure that the public works employees can get back to the city in the midst of a blizzard. You know, they're, they're out plowing the streets all night long, they're going to have to come back to work and keep plowing the next day. Are they going to be able to even get to work in their street vehicle or does it make sense to on the fly give them authorization, take the truck home tonight, you're going to be hitting the roads early tomorrow morning as well? And that has happened in the city in the past and under the policies that is allowed where the department head and the city administrator made the determination that there were operational needs to allow that employee to take that truck home in order to further the work that they're doing. And I think that's, you know, when we get specifically to the vehicle piece, we got to remember that all of the property that is owned by the city of Isanti is public property and that's why it's important to have policies in place that spell out how that property's going to be used so that it is only used for public purposes, that it is used in a way that maximizes the, the length and the life of the property. I think that's what Josie was talking about when she brought up, you know, what's common in a lot of other cities' policies is they might have a mileage requirement. If you have an employee that lives five miles out of town, 10 miles out of town, 20 miles, 50 miles out of town, where does the city council feel comfortable allowing an employee to drive a city-owned vehicle to and from work, paying for gas and maintenance of that vehicle, you know, twice every shift? You know, is there an outer limit that would make sense because, you know, you have the staff that's employed by the city right now, but policies, you know, last until they're changed? So if you have a policy in place that does not have a mileage limit and you have a new employee that comes in that lives 50, 60 miles away and is willing to do that commute every day, is that commute, is that extra travel on that vehicle something the city council wants to, wants to approve? So these are the, these are the types of things that would go into consideration in figuring out a policy of this type. Does anybody have any questions or I think I just talked for about 26 minutes.
I don't think we have any jurisdiction over the fire department, do we?
No.
No.
I just use it as a for instance.
Well, he used the fire department, so I just want to make sure.
Cause he's doing the same thing he knows.
Yeah, okay.
He's our attorney.
Oh, well, I know that, but I just don't know if he knows. I mean, you talk like the fire department, we had jurisdiction over him, so.
Some cities have fire departments or are part of the city.
Oh, yeah, I get that.
I was responding to a comment that was made by the mayor.
Yeah, and my question to you would be, I'm pretty confident that you represent other cities the same size as this one or close.
Yes.
What do they do?
In the cities that we represent, a lot of them do not have take-home vehicles. We represent a lot of counties and I can tell you that it's a lot more common that counties have take-home squads and I, I believe that that is more a function of how county law enforcement operates where it's a much larger geographic area and a smaller number of officers are covering a larger area. So having the vehicles out and about the county plays into that decision more. Now, I know you're also not, it's not my understanding that you're talking about providing all of your officers a take-home vehicle. So, I mean, what I will say is that the policies that I have seen for take-home squads definitely have the limitations in there, making sure that they are only, because the other thing you got to consider is that for most employees, if you were driving a company car, okay, that could be considered a taxable fringe benefit. Now, there are exceptions for law enforcement personnel as long as any personal use is very, very de minimis. So, for example, school buses would fall in that too. If, if the vehicle by its own unique nature sort of makes any personal use beyond minimal use unreasonable or just not going to happen, the IRS recognizes that this isn't an everyday driver for the, for the officer. You know, they, they recognize that an employee who picks up a gallon of milk on the way home from work, you know, might deviate from the highway into the grocery store parking lot and then get back on and continue their commute. That's not a personal use. But if you have an employee who is driving this city vehicle to, you know, a cabin for the weekend or to go fishing or something, I'm not saying that that's happening, I'm saying that this has happened in the world, that would be a personal use of public property, which would be a problem that the state auditor could be interested in as well, which is why having a policy that says this is what our expectations are, this is what the vehicle is supposed to be used for and this is what is not allowed with our vehicle that ensures that the public property is only being used for public purposes.
I got a question for the chief Myers. Does that vehicle that he was taking home, does that have a GPS in it?
No, no one does.
Could it?
It could.
Because the company I work for, we have GPSs in our vehicles and they know where it is at all times. I mean, I've gotten a phone call when I stopped at a friend's house on my home, "Why are you here?" You know, and it's like, "'Cause I stopped him on my home?" You know, I mean, they know where my vehicle is at all times.
And it's not necessarily that we're, need to babysit the lieutenant, but it's more than likely for his own safety and his own, I mean, if, if somebody were to say, "Hey, I saw him at a party in that truck," you could prove that wrong. You know what I mean? That's more what I look for is it's, it's more of a officer safety thing, I guess, more so than it would be to babysit him. I'm not worried about the lieutenant, I'm not worried about the chief. I think they have more morals than I could even explain, but I'm not disagreeing that we, we need a policy. I just know that granted, Tim, you're saying that you deal with counties more, but I have called and, and Ms. Wood had called because I, I found out when I called, they're, "Oh, your city administrator called me the other day." So I knew she was ahead of me, which doesn't shock me, but every city around us has their top two taking a vehicle home. Should we limit it within the county? I would think so. The lieutenant lives in the county, the chief lives in the county. That makes sense to me. Mr. Sylvester, I don't think you would disagree that it would probably be nice to have a four-wheel-drive vehicle for your employees to get to and from their home if they had to plow. I mean, we bank on you, this whole city banks on you to make sure you get from home to here. Do you have any employees out of the, the county?
All of them but one live in the county. One lives in town.
Well, I'm sorry to say, but the one would get short-changed. That's just my opinion. I think it should be within the county.
I don't know if, if Paul was on council then, but you, I don't know if you remember Pat Myers, he used to be the public works director? He had a vehicle he took home and he lived up by Knife River or Knife Lake. That's a drive.
Yeah, that's a, that's one by North Mora, right?
Yep.
Yeah, that's not even in the county.
No, and I don't remember why he got one to take.
Emergency response, tornado comes through town.
I can't, but I don't remember. There was a different, there was a different reason.
Yeah, but then why doesn't Mr. Celester have one?
There was, there was a different reason because I think he was carrying, I think he was carrying all the licensing for the sewer water treatment plant and there was a bunch of other things that he specifically had to be here if there was a problem. And I think that was the reason, I can't remember, I don't know if you remember Paul, do you?
No.
But, but personally, I see no problem with Lieutenant McCartney taking the vehicle home, he lives in Cambridge. But we do have our city policy and we have Lexipol policy and to solve this problem, in my opinion, is we need to get those two to jive. You know, it's, it's ultimately, you know, Mayor Johnson doesn't see a problem with him taking it. I don't see a problem with him taking it home, the vehicle home. He is our second-in-command. Chief Myers cannot be here seven days a week, 24 hours a day. Those two work together saying, "Okay, I'm going to go out of town this weekend, this one stays home." So we always have that chain of command within that department here. And I think, you know, I think every one of us sitting up here wants our department to be one of the best departments around and I don't think any one of us disagree with that. Now, if, if, if in my opinion, Lieutenant McCartney lived up in, you know, North Amora or whatever, we'd have to think about that. That's going to be kind of costly for us to pay for, but he lives in Cambridge. There was a situation that this all kind of came upon and kind of all came to a head type of thing, but, and it worked out for the best. You know, McCartney, Lieutenant McCartney has also, he is the, the SWAT commander.
SRT.
SRT commander of the, of the area, which is, which that is even makes us look better, which in my opinion, that's another good reason for him to have that vehicle. I, maybe I would suggest that him taking that vehicle home, I don't see why it wouldn't be a problem to put a GPS tracker in it. Just, just for the simple fact is, and I'm not saying he would do it, I don't take my van elsewhere, but just knowingly there's GPS in it, it does, there's, well, gee, I'm just going to run up here with the truck, it's easier for me to get out. It limits that of doing that because it's costing the city money when they do that, plain and simple. He is getting a perk to drive to Cambridge. I think the vehicle with the GPS in it would also eliminate the IRS being taxed because I don't get taxed on my company vehicle and I drive 70,000 miles a year just about. So I don't get taxed on it. So, and I think that eliminates some of those issues. I think Lieutenant McCartney's not, he is not being paid to be on call, but he is, he will come in if it needs to be, which that's a huge factor.
Well, he is technically getting paid to be on call.
No, he isn't.
No, he isn't.
Not, not until he hits the city limit.
He's not salary?
No.
No. No.
The lieutenant's never been salary in this city.
But.
That, so Mayor and Council, just so you're aware, so the callback for being on call is outlined within his bargaining agreement. If we're looking at changing that, that does modify his bargaining agreement potentially or we'd do something like a, an MOU. But when he gets, when, it's specifically written in his contract that if he takes a phone call, he does not get callback time for that. That's just, I would imagine it's in his job descriptions baked into his pay. If he does get called to come in, then he does get a three-hour callback.
Which the lieutenant from Bram gets two hours for calls.
Yeah. Well, if you come in.
Two hours extra on his paycheck, no, two hours extra on his paycheck period, just for taking calls. But I think that's crazy, but I don't think we should do that, but I'm just saying, I mean, there, there's some crazy things that happen within these police departments, but I don't think this is one of them. I think for us to have an emergency response 100% of the time, you can't bank on the chief 100% of the time. He's human, he's got kids, he's a great father, he does things with his kids. So, you know, he's on the lake and, and I only know this because it's public information, but we had an issue at the hotel. The chief was fishing with his son. The lieutenant made it there within three to four minutes. He came 20 minutes later because he had to get off the lake, bring his car home, drop his son off, get in his company vehicle and drive into the city. And when it comes to something like that, I only know because I have a law enforcement degree and I spent 18 years in the private sector, but the lieutenant gets there, he does the operation piece. Or, I'm sorry, I said that backwards, the command piece. So then he's doing the command of the situation, then when the chief gets here, the chief takes over the command piece and he shifts gears to the operation piece, correct, chief? So not one cop in this world could play two, both roles, no way. So for both of them to be there, it's, we all pay taxes in the city and I'd pay that tax any day.
So I, I think what we ought to do is look at our conflicts between Lexipol and the city policy and I think that needs to be first addressed. And then we need to decide if we're going to follow our procedure for the city staff or Lexipol's policy.
Can we just, as far as if we let, let the lieutenant have the take-home vehicle, which I'm not against, a lot of contracts will just say, or personnel policy will just say, you know, union contract supersedes this or Lexipol contract supersedes this or, you know, it's just an add to the existing policy. You don't have to change both policies, so they, you know what I mean?
Correct. We could write it a number of different ways. I mean, we can leave the language currently as it sits within this personnel, the city personnel policy, but modify the one within Lexipol to be specific to what positions because currently it leaves it open to chief's discretion who gets to take a vehicle home. It's not limited to the lieutenant alone. And I will let Mr. Sullivan speak on the bargaining agreement piece. It might be to the benefit of the city to have it written within an MOU within his bargaining agreement so it's very clear and understanding of what can be done.
Yeah, so I mean, there's a couple of different ways then you can figure out this new practice because on the one hand, one of the views is that it is a managerial right, you are directing personnel, it is the use and utilization of technology and property. You know, if the right to take home a squad car was, you know, in the collective bargaining agreement itself, you would never get that out of there without buying it back. So it would be a situation that would be hard to change. Now, if you had a memorandum of understanding with the bargaining unit because lieutenant is represented by a, a union and that, you know, spelled out some of the rules or, you know, the, the limitations of using the vehicle and you had an end date on that, that would mean that the union was aware of, of this change, was acknowledging the change and it wouldn't be in the contract itself. It would essentially be a side agreement with the, the union. I mean, the, the biggest risk you would face in, in moving forward with taking the position that this is an inherent managerial right would be the union disagreeing and saying that this would be changing the terms and conditions of employment for the lieutenant and that would be something that has to be negotiated. Now, that is not the best argument and they're probably not going to raise that argument if it's something that the lieutenant wants, which is a take-home squad. But really what it comes down to is changing it. You know, if you have this policy in place and then down the road, you know, you try to, you try to change this policy, there could be an argument from the union that this is a past practice and that it's something that needs to be negotiated or to that extent. I mean, I think that drafting up a policy, hearing the opinion of one, review Lexipol, review the personnel policy, I've already begun that process. There, I have highlighted a number of areas that there needs to be some clarification on it. And Lexipol, I mean, what Lexipol offers is, Lexipol offers a law enforcement policy hosting service. Those policies can be customized, can be modified to meet the needs of the city and in fact, they absolutely have to be modified and the chief has been going through and modifying those policies. You don't need to use every single policy that's in the Lexipol manual, like there's policies in there for horses and helicopters and I didn't see an airstrip or a stable outside of city hall here, for example.
No, it's over at the police department.
Yeah. There's also some policies in there that apply to like payroll or that apply to things like that, which, you know, you have a payroll office in city hall that handles all the employees payroll, so there really is no reason to have a separate payroll policy, for example, for the police department. So those, you know, I have, I have begun the process of reviewing those policies to try to see what unification, at least so we understand what the different proposed rules would be for the police department as for other employees. And then decide, the next step you brought up would be, as far as, you know, Josie brought this up, the policy for take-home vehicles within the department itself. It doesn't have a lot of the. It doesn't have a lot of the, um, restrictions that the other policies have. So those would be the specifics of which employees would this be within the chief's discretion to authorize it for. You know, even if it's limited to the lieutenant, under the existing personnel policies, if there is a one-time weird situation, the chief could go to the city administrator and say, for this one-time thing, weather-related or, you know, emergency-related, whatever, there is the authority within the current personnel policy to authorize an employee to take a vehicle, uh, you know, home.
But he has to have the city administrators' okay?
Yes, and I mean, I guess if that were unreasonably withheld, we would be, you know, the department head could come to the city council and say, I had a very legitimate reason for this, I feel like it should have been granted.
I know, you know, some police departments, all officers have take home cars if they live within the city limits. We don't have those, that amount of squad cars.
No.
So, but-
Nor, nor do I really think that's necessary.
I, I, I go through town and I like seeing squad cars parked in people's driveways.
It's not a bad thing, I agree.
It's a good thing for-
I agree.
But we just, we don't have that many-
There's a lot of liability there.
Not really.
What if somebody vandalizes that car while it's in their driveway?
It could vandalize, and they have been parked at, the police department, they've been vandalized.
Now we have cameras, so let them try it.
So Mayor Council, I mean, I think that, um, I did hear some words thrown out about potentially Public Works. Is anyone considering giving this, uh, take home vehicle use to Public Works, or are we strictly limited to the chief and lieutenant?
I think Matt should be able, because if he's, if he's gotta respond in an emergency overnight or something, Public Works read it, late at a pipe burst, whatever.
What about, what about the on-call guy though that has to do the snowplowing?
There's only one guy.
That's different. So everyone is basically on call all winter long in case of an emergency. So, for example, none of the employees for Public Works can drink when they're not on call because if there is snow in the forecast. However, every week we have a designated person who's on call, who must respond first for any other things besides snow. All hands on deck for snow, um, anything for whether emergency locate, uh, water main break, that first person's the person who's on that on-call rotation.
You're within the county, are you not?
But we're not worrying about them getting through like on a water main break or something like that, I mean. The only time we're worrying about getting them through is with the, with the snow, right? I mean-
I think that if you're looking at for, um, people to respond quickly, as, like, that's the lieutenant's thing, if he has his vehicle or even the chief, if it, they have that immediacy to respond, I would argue that most times, I mean, the majority of the times that Public Works on-call gets called in is for an emergency purpose. Uh, it's not just to come in to, I don't know, save a cat or something, that doesn't happen. Um, if we get graffiti or something, you know, we deal with that Monday, they may get called, but they're not coming in and responding. Usually when they come in to respond, it's someone's got sewage in their basement, or it's something that is not good.
Tornado.
Not necessarily time-sensitive.
Tree down across the road.
Uh, they do need to respond.
Well, but I mean, the difference between, not life or death necessarily, where he needs to get going at a hundred miles an hour to get-
He doesn't need lights or sirens in this vehicle.
Sirens, is what I'm saying, so.
Correct.
He's gonna get here, he's gonna get here in the same amount of time whether he has a car at home, or-
That's a big difference, is what I, I think Councilman Gordon's trying to say.
I understand that, I'm just trying to vet out what the council's looking for. You're right, though, he is, they're, Public Works would not be permitted to speed to get here for any kind of emergency. They're not-
I would, we gotta go through Lexipol, we gotta get that cleaned up for sure. I think John should be able to take a car home, and I think that's where I would leave it. I think everything else should stay the way it is.
A lot of, um, and I, I agree, um, but, uh, I can see Matt, um, having a take home truck. Um, a lot of, um, a lot of cities do, uh, say, two hundred dollar a month allowance if you don't wanna take the truck home and you wanna use your personal vehicles to respond for water sewer emergencies or whatever, it's two hundred dollar allowance, or whatever that dollar amount is. Um, if you wanna take the city truck home, you know, then you don't get that allowance. So there's, there's ways of doing it.
Is it, is it what you have, the allowance? Do you respond to?
No, I use my personal vehicle. But the Public Works Director does have the option of taking the vehicle home, or-
Or taking the allowance.
Taking the allowance.
I mean, if you think about it, we would have to lean on Matt quite often too, if it came to an emergency situation.
Well, the road's gotta be blocked off.
Roads, yeah.
Barricades need to be set up or whatever, he can respond in the city vehicle and go right, you know.
I mean, I'm not saying let's hand out keys to every vehicle to everyone, I'm not saying that at all. I think it's very, the, the chief and the lieutenant are life or death sensitive, he's-
I think the city minister used to have the same, same deal, if I remember right, Don had it. Do you take the allowance, or you take, take home car?
You have that option as well, you have the allowance.
No, I do not.
It's in your contract.
It is not, it was removed from my contract when it was voted upon. It was in my contract as a draft, uh, that went before City Council, because the previous city administrators did have car allowance and it was removed from the contract.
I think that-
That was, that was by the direction of a former council member, if you recall, I recall that now.
But there's, there, yeah, there's more to it than that, but, um-
I do think if you're, um, if you're tying people who are on call, I mean, that's to decide, so is a public services director on call all the time to respond. Perhaps he doesn't want to always be on call, now the majority of the time he is, but giving them a take home vehicle thus ensures that he's on call twenty-four seven. We have not had that arrangement with his employment agreement.
Well, I think we ought to address, I think we ought to address what the first problem is, and then I think at another further discussion, we can discuss other personnels within the city.
I'd like to hear from the personnel. I'd like to hear what Mr. Sylvester has to say at a later time. But I, but I think the one that's in front of us now, I, I think we've addressed it.
Well, we haven't heard Paul. I don't, did you say on that, Paul, about him taking the vehicle?
Which one, the lieutenant?
Lieutenant.
Well, I guess, I don't have, I don't have much problem with that, I guess I would rein it in a little bit when the, when the mayor says the county, I would definitely rein that in, I mean, I wouldn't give, I think Bram's too far to go, I mean, maybe a ten mile limit from the-
He lives in Cambridge though.
No, no, I, I know that, but I'm saying anybody else, if, if somebody was on call and they lived in Bram, I wouldn't want them to take home a vehicle. To me, that's almost as far as Knife Lake, you know, I realize Knife Lake is much further, but it's still, Bram's still a long ways to go.
So you wanna put it like a mileage?
I would, I would do a mileage, I-
Fifteen miles?
But I, I was thinking ten, but ten, twelve, but I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't do this on a, other than the lieutenant, I wouldn't do it on a regular basis, you know. Um, maybe if they're on call and live within ten miles of the city or something, but-
I think Lieutenant McCartney's got a, a unique situation to start with. And I, and I think that maybe from this point forward, if something else was to arise, that Chief Myers thinks that maybe another officer should have this, I think what it should be is brought to the city administrator, and the city administrator bring us, to us as a council. So it takes her being a bad person by saying absolutely not, and puts it on us five. Rather than, that, and that's following a chain of command. I mean, realistically, all these department heads should be reporting to the city administrator, and the city administrator should be bringing it to us before any decisions are made. And I think that that, and I'm not trying to take anything away from Josie, I think she's doing a fabulous job. It just takes her out of being a bad, being put in a position, being the bad person, where in, in this, ultimately, us five make the decision up here and, and the discussion.
I think this was a difficult situation for Josie, because it was, you weren't really aware of what was going on, right?
Correct.
So that, that's, you know, and, and it's not how things are supposed to happen necessarily, so I think that's part of the reason that this is, has gotten to be like it is, but... You probably just gonna say something like that, huh?
So, um, so my recommendation, um, hearing what Councilmember Lindine said, then would be for the Lexipol policies, perhaps Chief Myers and myself discuss them to look for conflicts, but final approval then of all Lexipol policies would go through the city council, if that's what you're looking to do.
I, personally, I believe so, and I think Chief Myers and I've had that conversation, I think he says there's a few things in here, he doesn't think they're right, you know, and we can't have conflicting policies. It's, it's not good for anybody when they're conflicting. You know, well, he said, he could do this, how come I can't do it? This is in the poli, the city's policy. Well, this is in Lexipol's policy, but it's not in the city's policy. We, I mean, we have to have a set of standards that's gonna work both sides for every party involved. You know, you bring up, you bring up union negotiations, as, as the attorney has said, once you put it in there, it ain't coming out.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm not saying put it in the union contract.
No, but I'm just, I'm using that as a, I'm using that as a reference thing. You don't wanna put anything in the union contract, because it'll never come out. I spent twenty years in the union, trust me, I know.
As he said, you'd have to buy it.
Buy it out, and most times they're not gonna sell it. Because it's a benefit that they're reaping from. I'm just using that as an example is all, I'm not saying that, on that. But I think that, I think Chief Myers and, and, you know, Ms. Wood, I think those two can really get to nuts and bolts and, you know, this really means something, this really doesn't, this really, this really should be addressed between the two, this doesn't need to be.
And then, but then have the final come to City Council?
I believe so.
So there's about six hundred pages of policies in the Lexipol policy manual.
I thi, I think it'd be common sense, Tim, that our city administrator and our chief of police could sit down and pick out what they think is conflicting. I also, a, and I don't think they're gonna play the he said, she said game, I don't think that would happen. And if it did, they have that opportunity to come before the five of us, and we're gonna say that, so she's not the bad person, or he's not the bad person, or vice versa. We're the ones that are gonna, i- it's kinda like the good guy, bad guy thing, we're gonna be the bad guy.
Yes, sir, I was seeking clarification for what you would like presented to the city council.
I don't, I don't think every six hundred pages needs to come to us.
I'm sorry, I'm not gonna read six hundred pages.
I mean, I already did, I, well, it's kinda sick, but I did. Uh, I did read the city one now too, I think I went through quite a few of those. I'm tired of looking at policies, but-
So, any of the questions that cannot be resolved between-
The chief and the city administrator, I, I think should be brought to us.
Okay, perfect.
Does that kind of forego, though, that the city administrator is overseeing the departments? That, I mean, if I say, Chief Myers, this has a conflict, this needs to be, um, written differently, so it doesn't conflict policy. He's like, no, I really want it that way, I don't, I don't have to listen to you, I can just take it to City Council. Isn't that a little bit, who is the authority? I mean, I almost feel like, I, I have no problem bringing my comments to City Council, uh, if it's a business item, so therefore I can speak on it, if council wants to be able to oversee the Lexipol policies.
So when we approved Lexipol, I mean, did we approve all of the policies that were intertwined with Lexipol? Or, because that's where I think we see the issue, is that we-
The resolution-
The system was approved.
You approved purchasing the system, okay? And then that started the chief's ability to review all of the policies and customize all of the policies. But from what I have seen, I haven't seen any city council action regarding those policies, so that-
We haven't said these specific policies are the city's policies, we're just saying we're using Lexipol.
Current personnel policies, the policy would be that department-specific policies would be presented to the administrator for approval.
Okay.
So, I mean, I just wanna clarify that, you know, Lexipol policies, we keep calling them that, but ultimately they are the city's policies. They would be the city's police department-specific policies that are hosted by Lexipol. Lexipol provides an easy way, you guys were already sold on Lexipol, so I don't have to, but an easy way to make sure that the employees get them, are trained on them, acknowledge them, they update them as law changes, things like that. But as far as to say that the city council has already approved and adopted all of the Lexipol policies, I don't think that that is the case.
But also, let me, let me be clear, you know, there is a chain, chain of command. You know, ultimately, the city administrator does oversee all these functions.
Right.
Policies, all this stuff. She, it, she ultimately is that person, but it's also her job to bring it to us for us to vote on. So I mean, by no means should any department say, I'm just gonna bring it to City Council and have them, because they have a disagreement. No, that, that, that isn't really how it works.
Well, and it's not like we've given the chief authority to implement every single policy in Lexipol either.
No, no, and I, and we, we can't, you know, then, when, when we start doing that, by taking, we put Ms. Wood in the position as city administrator. So we put it in our best interest to allow her to make the daily, everyday operations decisions, so that, otherwise, we'd all be called in here every day. We're not the city of Minneapolis, we don't operate councils five days a week.
Right.
So, you know, she is ultimately oversees all these departments, plain and simple. Not each department, each department are their own department, but yet they're not, they're in charge of their department, but yet she's the umbrella over all of them. And by no means do we want to step on her toes. By no means do we want to step on our chief's toes, no means do we wanna step on Matt Sylvester's toes. We don't want to be doing that, but yet again, we ultimately, ultimately make that decision, what should or shouldn't be done, and the final draft position. But it's, it's Ms. Wood's position to, to corral everything, as better words to use. We don't need to run a city by Sandy Daycare, you know, I mean, we just don't need to do this. We don't need this corner over here having a pissing match, and this corner over here having a crapping match. We, we, we don't need that, we need to, we need to have this unified, so everybody works as a coherent unit, rather than, well, I'm going here because I don't wanna listen to you. I, you know, I got enough drama, I go home every day, I don't need to come here and have the drama too. So, let's, you know, let's move forward, and I think, you know, I think both of them too are reasonable adults, and I think they can get things figured out to a point what's acceptable to bring in front of us to decide what we wanna do.
But should Josie have the final say on what comes before us? I mean, I think that would be-
Yeah, that'd be ultimately, because I think, I think, I think she, you know, I mean, she respects Travis. She doesn't wanna step on Travis's toes, and he doesn't wanna step on her toes. I just think that, you know, the two of them could save a lot of work between all of us. I mean, there is, every one of us sitting up here has a day job. I don't get paid enough to sit down and read a six hundred page policy, I'm sorry, sorry, I don't.
Right.
I, I don't have that time. And they can do that, that's what their job is, let them handle that and bring it to us and let us make the decision.
I don't get paid enough either, but I read it.
So Mayor Council, what I'm hearing you say is that the positions that we want to allow to take a city vehicle home is the chief, which is already completed in a bar, in his employment agreement, and then the lieutenant. So I think because it is limited to those scope of employees, that it would make sense to leave our personnel policy as is and modify the Lexipol agreement to be very specific for those two positions, and what you say can and cannot do. I heard a couple of different things in regards to the distance. Um, I heard ten miles, I heard I Sandy County, and I would, I do believe, I'm not exactly aware where the lieutenant lives, however, what, perhaps he may move from Cambridge. So do we want there to be a limitation outside of just Cambridge, keeping in mind that at some point he may move out of Cambridge?
I, I thought fifteen mile radius of the city limits would be good.
That sounds good to me.
Cambridge is roughly, depending on where you're going, it's seven to ten miles.
They used to be two, but now they're five.
Yeah.
Is the lieutenant building a house, chief? And is he in, within that fifteen miles? There we go, now we're back to square one.
If he builds, what did he say?
If he builds a house, he's not gonna be within fifteen miles. If you went to the county, now we're covering it. That's why I mentioned it that way.
But the problem is, that side of the county's closer than that side of the county. We're not in the middle.
You're right.
And that side of the county is further than that side of the county. So where are we talking? I mean, we, we can't, we can't give a five hundred mile radius, I mean, let's, let's be realistic.
Is the county five hundred miles?
Well, I'm just, I'm using this as a, for Jesus' mark. Yeah, it, it, when, okay, we're gonna go back to the old chief, Chief Hill. He lived in Moaca. Now, just, just stop, Isle, Isle. And it was brought, I brought it up to him when he came in to be chief, I said, "Are you going to move to the city of Iscany?" "Yes, within the year." That never happened. And that was one of the decisions that I made, to allow him to be chief, because he was gonna live in the city, that he's gonna represent as a chief. I mean, to me, that's very important, you have more, you have more stock in your community when you live in that community. I mean, I mean, let's be realistic, I mean, how far do you wanna go? I mean, if he's building a new house...
How far away is it, chief?
Iscany County is four hundred and fifty-two square miles, just for reference.
No, how, how far is the lieutenant, if he builds a house, chief?
Approximately twenty-six miles. It's just beyond my, where I live, from my knowledge, that's not a fact, I didn't calculate it, but it's approximately.
I mean, to me, that's all the more reason probably to have him take a car home, I hate that he's going that far, but if we want him here fast, then he better have a car at his house, you know what I mean?
That's the way I feel, too, but that's just my opinion, and we're two out of five, so...
Well, I, like I said, I don't have the problem with it, but you also gotta realize...
That's why I said county, period.
Well, I, I mean, yeah, just, when the chief needs another squad here, because this one's got five miles on it, we gotta, we gotta be understanding of that.
Yeah, right.
That's fifty-two miles a day.
It's a lot of miles, yeah.
I mean, realistically. You know, fifty-two miles a day, times...
What are we paying our guys that are, are working the shift? I mean, they're here, too, you know, so, I mean, they've gotta be able to take care of some things, and, and buy us some time, and plus, we have county that can come in on a big deal, and, you know, so you have several layers of production, too, so, yeah, yeah, that's a lot of miles.
I mean, I just, I, I mean, he has to understand that if, this, the thing is, it's, it's a lot of mileage, are we gonna, are we gonna be able to make that car last till the next, till the next, you know, his next replacement, you know? Is that, are we gonna be able to make that happen? You know, all of a sudden, engine starts knocking, or, now all of a sudden, we need new wheels on it, tires on it, because the tires got, you know?
Well, we want those vehicles in prime shape, too, I mean, they gotta be ready to go when, when we need them, so...
I mean, you just look at it, it's fifty-two miles one day, per day, ten days, that's five hundred and twenty, you know? Twenty days is over a thousand, and...
So, what is it, about fifteen hundred miles a month, so, times twelve, is...
Three and a half days a week.
Three and, three and a half days a week? Well, that means four days, four, that means four days he's coming here, though, right?
Four, so eight weeks.
That's two hundred and eight miles a week.
Times four point three four.
We put that on our squad cars, and...
Well, that's actually not, that's one way, so it's four hundred and sixteen miles a week.
It's roughly about a hundred thousand miles for ten years, which is the majority of the vehicle, I do not factor in cost, but...
And then not count, factoring in how many miles he's gonna drive during the day that he's in it.
And then in our fleet plan, there's my vehicle, investigator's vehicle, and that vehicle, and our investigator's vehicle, I don't have, I think about nine thousand a year, I don't give that, but our investigator's vehicle sits in the office, so, at least our fleet plan is to rotate those three vehicles to keep mileage when they go out to be even.
What are the possibilities of doing something like sending it home with him when the chief's on call? I mean, do we actually just assign him a vehicle, he takes it all the time, or, you're, you're on call, you get the vehicle while you're on call, because you're the one that's gonna come speeding in.
No, you made, no, but you made the, now you made the mistake, he's on call, which then he gets paid to be on call. You can't say he's on call, because as soon as you do that, he's gonna want compensation for being on call, not just the vehicle.
Well, then, how do you say, I mean, I don't care how you say it, I mean...
Are you saying, uh, the, when the chief is on vacation or something?
When the chief is not available, he's answering calls, then, he's not on call, he's answering calls, then, then he can take a vehicle home. I mean, do you do it that way, then? I mean, what's the purpose of having a vehicle, it's so he can respond quickly, why would he need it if the chief's on, if the chief responds to calls?
I believe the lieutenant's job description has that he's the acting chief when the chief is not available, and, you know, like the incident at the hotel you discussed earlier, we don't always know when that's gonna be.
Right.
But there probably are certainly some times where you do know when that's gonna be, if there was a planned vacation, anything like that. There's also other things that we could, we could put our heads together, and I don't think that you guys need, if we can get marching orders on ideas from the council in this, um, you know, committee of the whole meeting, um, we can, we can see if we can work something out. Uh, it's just a matter of, um, you know, coming up with that language, we would just want some parameters or ideas of what the council as a whole is looking for. And we are also talking about, we don't, we, it sounds to me like we don't entirely know whether he's building a home, where he's going to live. I also just wanna point out that this policy isn't just for the individual who's holding the lieutenant position right now, but, you know, you're making a policy for whoever's going to be next.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it, it's not a, you know, we, I, I would advise against tailoring something specific for what you have right now, but there are ways that we could put our heads together and think about a way to try to have the best of both worlds. I just, you know, to try to keep the conversation, you know, of any sort of information you can provide for Josie and the chief when they're having these discussions, for when we come back to you, um, to try to minimize your discussion and debate at that meeting would be helpful for us.
Makes sense to me.
In your email, Josie, you're saying that you recently became aware of the lieutenant was permitted to drive a city vehicle home, when asked under what authority, he was informed he was permitted to do by the Lexi pole, Lexi pole policy. So, who told you that? The lieutenant or the chief?
Chief Myers.
So, I guess I would look at Chief Myers and say, "You told him to take the vehicle home, what reasoning did you have?"
We're, we're not debating, excuse me, Mayor, we're not debating that, he believed that he was under authority to do that under the Lexi pole, which is why we're also having the policy discussion for Lexi pole, of who oversees those policies.
Right, I understand that. I, I guess where I was going with that question is, whether Lieutenant McCarty lives in Cambridge or he lives twenty-five miles away, is his reasoning justified no matter where he lives? That would be my worry. As a taxpayer in the city, if you're ten minutes on a response time, I'm gonna sue ya. That's the bottom line, that's, that's a huge, huge, uh, liability issue, in my mind. The quicker he gets there, or the lieutenant gets there, or the police, for that matter, get there, the more relaxed I am as a resident. Now, if we're taking long time, the fire department, and chief, I've, we've chuckled about it, and I've made fun of you for it, the fire department beats our police department probably, it's a fifty, it's a gamble, who's gonna get there first? But right now, I would say the fire department's getting on medicals sooner than the police are. That's crazy.
Well, that's not...
That's not...
The, the, the police have a lot more things going on, I mean...
And I understand that.
They might be busy with, that's not just because we have a car at home necessarily, I mean, a lot of times, they do be us.
Response time is a key, is my point, period. So, whether it's a critical incident or not, response time is, is huge. That's the only point I'm trying to make, so...
Well, my question to that is, I mean, I'm just for discussion, is, is, if, if the chief responds to a call, doesn't another officer respond first? I mean, he's coming in second, usually if he's at home, and it's four o'clock in the morning, and there's a call, and he hears it, oh, I'm gonna go to that call, my guess is the officer on duty is beating him to the call, at least I would hope so, isn't, is that, is that third to scene, chief?
Yeah, I mean, I think that general principle, ju, uh, Mayor Johnson was asking, is, you know, as far as the council's aware, is what's the reasoning? I guess that's what you're looking at, too. I mean, ours, police department of ten officers, we don't have sergeants, you know, they got a bigger agency, the sergeant, which is supervisor on duty, twenty-four hours a day, seventies a week, you have that supervisor on scene, matter of minutes of what's going on, we don't have that ability. You know, we have officers working, they go to a scene, they can handle the scene, but they don't have the supervisor ability, like, you know, for example, a critical incident, um, our officers are not gonna request special response teams or other things, hostage negotiators, um, for example, at the one Mayor Johnson mentioned, that was requested within the first ten minutes of that scene of resources from Noka County, and negotiators. For other examples of critical incidents, I'm not gonna mention the issues, but you have critical incidents of officers involved in a critical incident, there's things that we tell our officers that even if a sergeant from a, a different agency shows up, make sure that you don't respond to them, that we have our certain protocols, because the questions that are asked of that officer, the way it's handled within the first few minutes are critical as far as the liability from the city, as far as if you have the wrong person asking the officer the wrong question, it may not turn out well. I mean, there was a critical incident in the cities that was very publicized, if you watched the audio from the, this, the video from the officer, that agency was similar to us, where they didn't have on-call supervisor, where they didn't have a supervisor on duty. There was another supervisor from another city that goes to that officer that just was involved in critical incident, asked questions that they shouldn't have asked, elicited answers that they weren't supposed to answer, that ended up in their trial court and civil court. So, those are the reasons why an officer, it's not the fact that we're gonna go there and, uh, handle a, an in-progress situation, we're gonna handle the administration and supervision of, that the process is being done right, um, on the city's behalf. Does that make sense?
Yep. Thanks, 'cause I was stumbling over all that, I just kept picking pieces up and trying to put it together, and I couldn't do it, so thanks.
So, so what I'd like to say, Jimmy, what do you think? Twenty-five miles are gonna be unreasonable for you?
I don't know, then, what, anything to do with math on that, I mean, what is it, a hundred thousand miles, he said, is kind of the...
In ten years.
Yeah, right, but I mean, when do we start looking to get a new car, is...
So, if you had four workdays, you have twenty-six miles, one-way trip, you end up at ten thousand four hundred miles per year. Regarding the, the radius and the, the, whether or not it should just be the county, uh, to my mind, I think you just use a far-point radius, and just say, where in the county is the farthest point from the city, that is now the, the radius, whether that's thirty-one miles, or thirty-nine miles, or whatever it is, to the far point, that way, you know no matter who you have, if they live within the county, they're automatically covered. And if they're within that distance, they're covered, even if they are slightly outside of the county, so...
That makes sense.
That makes...
And that makes total sense, and then also, his input on this thing is gonna be huge, because he's the one that's gonna have to make the magic work for him to replace that vehicle when it has to happen.
How, how soon, how much sooner are we gonna have to replace that, then?
So, I'm giving that some thought in my mind, I think probab, right now, those, um, you know, those admin-level PD vehicles we replace every ten years, under the assumption that they're not going home. If they're going home, and I'm thinking about roughly ten thousand miles per year, there's probably no way you do anything less than cut the useful life in half, and it might be worse, worse than that. Um, I mean, 'cause you, you know, you gotta figure, you're, you're at a hundred thousand miles after ten years, without any city use on the vehicle, so I don't know how you really get anything better than five years out of it at that point. So, that would, you know, that, you know, those are costs that every four or five years, maybe only every three years even, um, you know, we're gonna tack on another fifty-five thousand dollars for a new vehicle.
Mayor, Council, if I may, we are over time for this discussion, because we do have goal setting before council, uh, does there, do you have direction for staff to start working on something? Um, otherwise, we will bring this back to committee of the whole next month, I mean, we could have this discussion at council, I don't think it would be the best, um, I think that committee is the best place for these thrashing out ideas.
I don't, I don't wanna blast this, so then, in a council meeting, then we have people at the media table picking up, running with this, I don't want that happening.
That's what she did, so...
Yeah, I, I, I'm with you on that, I don't want that happening.
Like, I guess my recommendation, um, would be, uh, you guys take it and bring it back to us and put, and to play it like what Mr. Beckett said.
Put some numbers and costs and analysis to it.
The radius, because, you know, if you do within the county, like he said, well, say you're in Bram, but you're over, the next guy might live over North Preston Township, technically it's out of the county, but it's only like fifteen miles, not even, you know? So, I like that idea, so it's a fair radius all the way around.
That's what I was gonna say, wi, within a radius of the city.
Yep, and then I'd ask the chief, and Josie, maybe you could come up with a car juggling kinda thing, where if, if the lieutenant's driving this car for so long, and then maybe it could be right, retired into a patrol car, or, you know...
Investigator car.
Somehow, you know, get creative with it, you know, where I'm going with this, so we can maybe...
Stretch the life of it.
Stretch the life of that vehicle out a little.
Are we in agreement?
If there's, you know, something there.
Are we in agreement that, um, it will not be driven for personal use?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Okay, I just...
I still think the GPS is not a bad idea, though.
I don't disagree with that.
Something happens, somebody carjacks that sucker, we can still find it.
I, I can tell you, and, and I won't say the department, but I'll spit this out real quick, there's, there's a department within our county that he can take his car shopping in Rosedale Mall, and if he gets a call, he has to fly back to the county, I think that's ridiculous.
There just needs to be tracking and logging IRS, he gets taxed on it, there's withholdings for it.
The GPS would eliminate that, though, right? I mean, there wouldn't be any question.
It would raise accountability, I, I...
Yeah.
I believe it would help people know that they should behave.
Not that I think he'd miss...
And Chief Myers is also agreeing to it, so...
What you gonna spend on tracking that car that nobody's...
It really isn't, it isn't that expensive.
It's, it's, wither fleet is twenty-six dollars, is it a month? Do you remember, Mike?
We can put that cost together when we bring our nails to span.
We already have it on our patrol vehicles, I think it's...
Yeah, all the, all the patrol vehicles have it.
I do, um...
Plus fuel, too, I mean, we haven't even talked about the cost of fuel, too.
Right. I do think it is best, um, to leave the personal policy where the city administrator is still overseeing, as admin does deal with the liability issues, claims, insurance, and all those things, so, I mean, I think that that is important to stay, if it's permitted to the lieutenant, um, if it, for example, if it ends up being where the lieutenant could, could only take the vehicle home when permitted by the chief, I think that it would be appropriate that the chief would notify the city administrator. Doesn't sound like that's the way that this is going, but I just wanted to throw that out there. Um, last bullet on here would be, do, does the city council care that if it's marked or unmarked? Currently, they're unmarked vehicles, they do have to be equipped with certain elements of law enforcement, like lights and sirens, is everybody on board with them being unmarked?
It's ten percent of the fleet, right, chief?
Ten percent of the patrol vehicles, or primary patrol vehicles.
This would be considered an admin vehicle, so it's not part of that fleet.
Yes, think about, if there is a way to rotate that vehicle into a different type of service, maybe keep that in mind when you're saying unmarked or marked.
Yeah. I'm okay with unmarked.
I mean, it's, if it's gonna have all the lights on it, just as much as a marked vehicle does, it's just...
Well, they're in that, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that they're, it's somewhat difficult to tell, um, if it's, if, what you said, Councilmember Coulson, is that you'd like to see the squads in people's driveways, it doesn't look like a squad.
No, yeah, right, but I mean, if, he's, you know, that's, if you live in the community, it looks good, you know?
It needs to meet...
Gives a presence.
It needs to meet the definition of a public safety vehicle, so, I mean, lights, sirens, radio, all of that, you know, we've had other ones where a sheriff wanted, "Well, I can bring a handheld radio, let me just drive that SUV," and it's like, no.